Okay, we got green lights, sir. The guys are ready.
Six three zero eight eight five five zero five zero.
Sisters actually might know where her sister's on.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, good. Perfect.
Appreciate the referral.
Good evening. I would call to order the Wednesday, October 13th, 2021, regular meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. Hey, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Scales. Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. And Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Everyone, if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have everybody standing, anyone and everyone who testifies must be sworn in. Please raise your right hand and swear that any and all testimony you give tonight will be the entire truth, so help you God. Thank you. Reminder to silence all of our electronic devices. And another reminder that everyone who testifies has to sign in with their name and their contact information. We have a sign-in sheet out in the hallway there on the table and up at the podium. Next item is the approval of minutes for the August 11th, 2021, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Clemmons.
Second.
A motion to approve Clemmons and a second. Van Buren.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren said yes. And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Okay, minutes are approved. At this point, each meeting, we have an opportunity. It's called the open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to speak to any issue that is not on tonight's agenda, this is your chance. This board is the public hearing arm of the village board, and it's an opportunity for people to do this. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. I'll review the public hearing procedures for the commission. First, we introduce the applicant and his or her petition. The applicant then presents the petition. Next is village staff will comment on the petition, and then it's the public's turn. If there's any people from the public who want to question or comment on the petition, it's their turn. And of course, the petitioner can also respond to those questions and comments. We have the village attorney, Zamanak, here to assist us with any consultation points of order. And finally, it comes to the commissioners, and we will question and comment on the petition and finally vote on it. Just a note, as we know, that all votes do include the findings of fact, if applicable. When it's all over, our recommendation, whether it's a negative or positive, is not a permanent. It's a recommendation only, and going to the village board, staff will notify the petitioner when they'll be scheduled for that. Any questions on that? Okay. Before we get into new business, I'd like to have Economic Community Development Director Sylvester to address the group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I just wanted to give a quick report and update on some staffing changes that have happened rather quickly, just in the last two months. So in mid-August, we learned that Nalini Johnson, who had been the village planner for about two and a half years, was taking another position. And that was right before I was about to leave on a somewhat extended leave. So we were in a bit of a crunch. That's why we canceled the September Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, just because of the staffing situation. Joe Henrefind, who I believe everyone present tonight, actually, maybe Allison, this was before you were appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I think the rest of you were on the Planning and Zoning Commission before, when Joe served the village as the planner. Joe was available and in a very helpful and much appreciated manner, said that he would help us on an interim basis, and he is here for an interim term helping us, although we're also working with him to make it a permanent arrangement, and that's in process. We are desperately hoping that that gets done soon, and Joe has indicated a desire to be here for the long term, and the village wants him to be here for the long term. So as soon as we figure out all that paperwork, we'll be able to permanently welcome Joe here as the planner. But for now, I'd like to just welcome him and thank Joe for stepping in and helping us in this situation. So I just wanted you to know that before you got into the meat of the meeting, so none of you were wondering like, didn't Joe used to work here three years ago? And what's Joe doing here? So that's why Joe is here, and I just wanted to explain that.
All right. Well, thank you, sir, and welcome back, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Under new business, our first item is PZC 0792020, a request from Nishen Company Catering and Events and Westmont Business Park regarding the property located at 825 North Cass Avenue, Unit 303 in Westmont. And first is a text amendment, a request to amend Appendix A, Section 8.13 of the Westmont Zoning Code, to add catering facilities as a special use in the Office Research District. And secondly, a special use permit request to operate a catering facility in the Office Research District. Who will present for?
Mr. Chair, staff will present the text amendment, which is the first part of this.
Okay.
And then when staff presents the text amendment, the applicant will come up and discuss the special use.
Understood.
So this is for, although this is specifically listed for 825 North Cass, which is the Oakmont Business Center, this has two parts. So the first part is the applicant had approached the village for a catering facility. And I want to give a little quick background is there has been a catering facility in this space, in this office park, since approximately 2014, although at some point it did close down. And that catering facility was permitted in the space in error because catering facilities are not a technical listed special or permitted use in that zoning district. So the previous user was in there. They built out a commercial kitchen and they operated there, actually in a space twice the size for quite some time, with no issue. The applicant found another, or so the property owner found another business that wanted to locate in there, another caterer, but we could not permit the caterer to move in without first approaching the question of a text amendment. So whenever a text amendment is requested to the village, the village does do analysis and try to determine if it's appropriate in the zoning district. So in this case, the village staff did look at this and feel it is appropriate. A catering facility doesn't fit neatly into any zoning district because basically they have a few employees, they have requirements for a few commercial vehicles, they prep food, and then they move it off-site and serve folks off-site. That doesn't fit very neatly into a business district, which we want to be generating retail sales, doesn't fit neatly into a manufacturing district, which when you're preparing food tends to be, you know, most of manufacturing district uses are not really something you want to have food around unless you have a standalone building. But staff did investigate that, and staff landed on the fact, or on the decision that it was best as a special use, not a permitted use. So basically, we want it examined by both Planning and Zoning Commission and village board prior to moving in, to make sure it's appropriate for the space that they're looking at. So we are proposing that as a special use, and we felt it was important, in addition to the special use standards, which all special uses have to answer, where there's no appreciable traffic congestion and some of the other things, we felt it was important that we wanted to regulate, number one, that they were preparing food for off-site consumption, number two, that the parking requirements for the building, or in this case, the multi-tenant area was still satisfied, and that any commercial vehicles that the business may need were regulated in some way. So the text that's before you tonight proposes regulating the commercial vehicles, number one, that they should be stored in a designated area, that they should tell us what that count is. In this case, the applicant has stated they need one for now, but they'd like the allowance for three because they do anticipate that they will add to their fleet. And so what we've done in here is added a clause that basically says, well, you can't increase that number by more than 20% without coming back for a reapproval of your special use. Vehicles should always be operable with current registration. Vehicles shall not be used to store or warehouse products or materials for a period more than 72 hours. What we're trying to do with those two clauses is if the business is successful and outgrows the space, we really don't want them to take advantage of the fact that they have a truck sitting outside that they can just use as a shed. Really, it's, we want to make sure that the vehicles that are on site are actually used to transport and are used frequently so that they don't just sit there and become a nuisance or a code enforcement issue. We state that the vehicles shall be parked in the standard parking stalls and cannot encroach other stalls or required drives and aisles. Oversized vehicles are prohibited. So really, what we're trying to do there is state that, you know, a van or a small box truck that can fit in a standard space is probably appropriate, but we don't want any larger trucks that suddenly migrate into those parking lots. And then finally, we don't want to really see the trucks, and we don't want them to operate as advertising, because a lot of times, if you remember, there was a window company on 63rd and Cass that had two really old dilapidated trucks for many years that advertised on those trucks. What we're trying to avoid is that, number one, there's advertising, and number two, that they can be seen. So basically, we stated if it's an important street, and the way our code defines important streets, it's those streets that have supplemental setbacks. It's Cass Avenue, it's Ogden, it's some other streets that are there. But basically, we said if it's an important street to us, we don't want to be able to see those. So we want you to park those in a designated area that is towards the back or hidden in some way. So that outlines the text amendment. So now I will turn it over to the petitioner for the special use request, and then I will sum up, just in case there's any additional items that we need to discuss with the special use.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jim Melgine from the Buchanan Law Group. Our address is 15 Salt Creek Lane, just next door in the village of Hinsdale. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of the property owner that owns the Oakmont Business Center, which is Westmont Business Park LLC. And also here with me this evening are our proposed tenants, Ally Cavedo and Nicole Dryden. They're the applicant on the petition for the special use. And, you know, staff did a great job of kind of setting the stage, which makes my job a lot easier here. And just as an initial note, having worked with, you know, Joe since he's been back has been significantly helpful going through this process. If, you know, if he were to become a permanent member of staff, I think it would be something that, being on the developer and property owner's side would be, you know, very helpful. So, you know, thank you, Joe, for everything that you've done as part of this process. But as Joe mentioned, this particular units within the business or in this office complex was previously used as a catering facility, and actually, it was two units. So what Ally and Nicole are proposing is only using half the space. So when we look at impact, primarily either on roadway or in particular, what we're concerned about is, you know, the impact that it would be on our tenant, we don't see that there will be any negative impact. We've had a larger catering use there for many years, and it has never been an issue. We believe that what they're proposing in terms of their use of this space complies with all the regulations that the village staff is contemplating to be approved, and we don't have any problems with that. What's beneficial in particular about our particular site is that the way that our building is situated on the parcel, that the building itself buffers Cass Avenue and Chestnut from the parking that is located almost more in an interior courtyard. So all that work, you know, that they're going to be doing is going to be more interior to the site. I know Ally and Nicole would be happier, you know, to answer any questions that you might have, but I think Joe did a very nice job of outlining what our request is, and we look forward to your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. It's the public's turn. Would anyone like to address the applicant or the subject? If not, then Joe, do you have any other comments before I turn it over to the Commissioners?
I just wanted to reiterate that this unit, which is Unit 303, so there are three buildings on this lot. This is the building that is furthest from Cass. You really can't even see it from Cass, which is our supplemental setback street. And in particular, this office park development, you can't see any of the parking, for the most part, from Cass. All the parking is behind the building. And they have proposed that the three vehicles that they would like are actually furthest away from Cass, adjacent to the manufacturing property to the east. And then if you have any questions for, about the business operation, I know that the business is here, and if you have questions for them, you can go to them as well.
All right. Okay, Commissioners. Commissioner Lavoy, would you like to start?
Yeah, thank you. My first question is for Joe, and that is that in relation to the text amendment, probably, I can only surmise that the reason why that it's not in there now is because, like, this building and this office complex really wasn't designed to have cooking equipment and hoods and all refrigeration and other grease traps and that kind of thing. So the building really wasn't designed for a type of business. This particular use is taking advantage of probably that already being done in those two units. They're only going to use one, I get that. But, you know, it probably really doesn't apply to, you know, other properties for a text amendment because of the lack of those improvements to those types of buildings. So I guess my question to you, is it really necessary, do you think, to do a text amendment? Or can we just do a special use for this particular petitioner?
So to answer that, the first thing we always do with a use is we need to figure out, number one, if it's listed. It's really easy if it's listed. If it's not listed, then we do have a certain amount of discretion to say, what is it most similar to? And in this case, the Office Research District, if you've ever read, the list of permitted uses is very limited. Basically, it says offices and research labs.
Yeah.
There are a few other exceptions that are in there. And so there wasn't really any wiggle room for us to just state, just go for a special use.
This gives us the conduit to do that.
Correct. And you are absolutely correct in that this building is unique. This is one of the few office research buildings we have that is designed with separate entrances for each of the users, whereas, you know, on Pasquenelli, we have more high-rise office buildings where, you know, if someone approached us for one of those buildings, I think it's more likely that we'd say, this doesn't fit very well because you don't have your own access, you can't park right in front of your space, you're intermixed with office uses that have to share hallways and such. It does seem like we are putting it into a use where there's not a lot of buildings that are available, but quite honestly, we looked at the business districts, and because of the truck component and the lack of retail component, we really couldn't say that that's a good space for it. Manufacturing could be applicable, but because it's a food service and because this is very nominal impact in terms of the size of the proposal that's there, that's the way that staff progressed and felt that this was appropriate, and what you stated was still correct. There's not a lot of options, but we also don't get a lot of requests for catering facilities.
Okay. And my second question and final question is, is would we have to vote on the text amendment separately from this petitioner?
I will let our attorney answer that.
Yeah, it is two separate votes, although they're kind of commingled here under the same request.
Right, right.
The text amendment vote has to come first.
Right.
And if that's approved, then you can vote on the request for the special use that the text amendment creates.
Got it. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Clemmons?
Yeah, I can appreciate the uniqueness of the situation with this. In a, I'm in support of it. I think with the unique situation, I think it's a good fit for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I think I'll address the applicant first, just about the business operations. Is this a catering kitchen that's just a private business catering to private events? Or is this an outsourced kitchen to other branded restaurants and stuff like that? And the heart of the question is really about the pickup and deliveries and loading. Yeah.
Please come to the podium.
Hi, how are you? So we're a privately owned catering company. We basically serve lots of privately homes, whether it's in Hinsdale, Oakbrook, lots in the western suburbs, some in Chicago, some in the North Shore, but we do not go to, we are not cooking and giving to other corporations. We are all privately purchased.
Okay. And then what are the largest vehicles? Part of the text amendment, this might be for you, Joe, part of the text amendment references oversized vehicles. Is that a definition that exists in our code? Or what is an oversized vehicle?
I don't think there's a specific definition there, and I think we deliberately left it vague, because when you digest our code, and so we discussed commercial vehicles in several different sections, including traffic sections, including the zoning definitions, and there are a couple of different ways that they look at it. Unfortunately, the way the zoning code addresses it, I think, is there's limitations on residential areas, but it doesn't give a lot of guidance in the commercial zones. And I'm going off my memory of the code, so forgive me if it's a little foggy. So basically, when we were writing this, we wanted to basically make the statement that said, we don't want to end up with oversized vehicles that can't fit in whatever the design parking lot is. So if they had a larger vehicle, but the site could easily accommodate it because the site was used to accommodating larger vehicles, I don't know that we want to limit it. We just wanted to make sure that we didn't end up with a scenario where there were six trucks, they were all really large, they were all encroaching into the drive aisles, and you were trying to maneuver around them. And this was the most logical way we felt we could write it.
Okay. Thank you. The only other question I really had was about kitchen exhaust fumes, and that more pertains to the text amendment, because I understand this particular building has already had a kitchen twice the size, and presumably, there have not been complaints about smells and odors, and I think, given the context around the specific site, it shouldn't be a concern. But just as it pertains to a text amendment that could be more universally applied to other buildings, there is a question in my head, is that controlled via some other method in the code already? Odes and stuff?
So primarily for zoning, where it's discussed is in the manufacturing district, we have all these standards for noise, smells, smoke, and then in that code, it says, these are applicable to all zoning districts. So even though we describe it in the manufacturing district, because that's usually where you get most of these infractions, it is applicable to all zoning districts. So basically, if there were complaints about a smell, whether it's in a business district or whether it's here, we have enforceability with that.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Okay. And I need to have, and make sure that, ma'am, I need to make sure that everyone who comes to the podium states their name and signs in, if you would, please. And I need also to confirm that you did swear in. You were in the room when we swore.
I was in the room. I swore in and I signed in.
Yes.
I'll sign in again.
Thank you.
Just for the purpose of the person taking minutes tonight, can we have your name, please?
My name is Ally Cavedo, A-L-I-C-A-V-E-D-O.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Everything sounds like it's been pretty well ironed out. Ally, I ask this question, is this in any way related to food trucks? Are you cooking to a food truck?
I should have picked a chair closer to the front. No, no food trucks are proposed as part of their use.
Okay, just most residential or gittering to it?
Correct.
That's all I have.
And sir, stay there. Okay, thank you. I have one question, and that's to do with delivery vehicles, delivering raw produce and so forth. Do you anticipate, I just like to know what kind of traffic to expect, service and delivery vehicles?
Yeah, we can get some details from them, but one of the things on behalf of the landlord that we were concerned about is, you know, obviously, the frequency and the size of the trucks. And, you know, all the deliveries are going to be by either Sprinter van or box-sized trucks, which is something that we see as part of our overall Office Research use in that parking lot. So there's no, you know, large trucks, you know, that are going to be coming in in terms of semi-trucks or anything like that. That's something that we, you know, which I think is one of the limitations in the proposed amendment. So that was something that we vetted as a landlord as well.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other additions, remarks, comments from the public? Sir, if you address the board, you have to come to the podium. Thank you.
What do you do? It's a name, D-U-A-N-E for spelling.
I signed in out there.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Newt.
After listening to this discussion, I'm kind of familiar with, well, OR. Can this use also be added to OR 1? With the limited uses in the OR and OR 1 district?
That is not part of the proposal, and really, the OR 1 district that exists is basically that stretch of Cass Avenue on the north side of Ogden. That's kind of a mix of some offices and some old residential houses. Some are still uses residential houses. That is primarily where the OR 1 district is. And that district was created kind of specifically for those homes that are there because the intent was that over time, these homes that fronted on it to busy Cass Avenue would become offices. So no, it is not being proposed at this time.
And it couldn't be added?
It could only be added through a process similar to this, where we published it in the public newspaper. And so if a request came in, the request can be entertained. At this point, staff is not directing that we are proposing it in the OR 1.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. At this point, Chair, would entertain a motion to approve PZC 0792020, Paragraph A, a text amendment request to amend Appendix A, Section 8.13 of the Westmont Zoning Code, to add catering facilities as a special use in the Office Research District.
Motion to approve, Clemmons?
Second.
Second. Lavoy?
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second discussion. Questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And secondly, a special use permit request to operate a catering facility in the Office Research District.
I'll make a motion to approve. Lavoy?
Second. Sharp?
Second to Sharp. Motion is made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, ladies and sir, you have our approval, so you'll be notified by village staff when you're scheduled to appear before the village board. Thank you for coming and good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next item is PZC 0772021, a request from SARC US LLC regarding the property located at 6320 South Cass Avenue in Westmont for the following. A preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate two lots in the C1 Commercial Business District. Paragraph B, zoning code variance, request to allow a parking lot to encroach into the Cass Avenue supplemental setback line. And C, a site and landscaping plan approval for a medical clinic in the C1 Commercial Business District. And who would address the board? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for having me. My name is Tom Libo. I am an owner representative for SARC US. Right now, we currently own and I think purchased the 6320 South Cass as much as a few months back. And right now, what we're looking to do is get approval on the plat of consolidation that we submitted. The parking variance, that is primarily due to, there is one tree we're trying to preserve. And then also the way the, the way the other, the neighboring businesses set up to Cass Avenue, they are fairly close to, fairly close to the street as well. So we, we fear if we put, if we put our building too far back, which it would kind of hinder our sight lines. So that's really the, the main reason for the parking variance. And then overall, yes, we're looking to put in the advanced care medical. It's a medical clinic looking to treat people for urgent care, acute care, illness and injury, maybe a supplement to your primary care. Nothing in terms of surgery or anything like that. I'm here for questions if you have anything else for me. I'll be right here.
Okay. Well, why don't you just stay right there?
Sure.
And, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And staff.
So what you have here is basically a three-part request tonight. So the first is a preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate two lots. And that's more of a housekeeping issue. So what used to be on this property was a Chase Bank, and it was on two underlying lots. And in past practice, many communities, not just us, would allow construction on lots when, as long as they were under a single ownership, you could build on them and basically have a lot line that went right underneath your building. Current practice is, we like to have everything consolidated on one lot. So that first request is a consolidation of the lot. The second request is a zoning code variance to park in the front yard setback for Cass Avenue. So Cass Avenue is one of those streets that we designate as important, so we have a supplemental setback. So this zoning district would typically just have a 10-foot setback if it was not on Cass Avenue. It has a 30-foot setback because it is on Cass Avenue, and we hold that to both the building, the structure, and the parking lot. And it's a fairly common thing that we've done. We've seen it on Ogden with a lot of the dealerships. We've seen it at 63rd and Cass. There have been situations in the past where we have granted variances to this. In particular, I think that, that this lot is unique in that it's a narrow lot when you compare it to some of the other lots that are along Cass. If you've been out to the site, there is a car wash right next to, on the north of this property, and then Papa Paceros is just to the south. So there's not a lot of visibility, especially if you're going 35 or faster, like a lot of people do on Cass Avenue, to visually see what's there. And I don't know how many times I drove by that bank when it was open before I realized there was a bank that was even there. It's very just easy to not notice it. So that kind of narrowness of the lot, the visibility, and then when you look at the other lots in comparison, none of those lots have a 30-foot setback. So is it, is it matching the character of the neighborhood? Yes, it is. Now, if you look at the development of 63rd and Cass, we did still require that setback. And if you look at that new parking lot just south of Starbucks there, you'll see a big grassy area that is more substantial. And that's what you get when you hold firm to that setback. And I think on 63rd and Cass, where you have a big redevelopment, and you have the ability to create these view corridors, which are important to those big, big users, perhaps it's not as applicable to a small site like this. And finally, the last request is a site and landscape approval. So any commercial building in a commercial district needs site and landscape approval. And I'm happy to go through all these setbacks and bulk standards, if you'd like to go through one by one, but all of them have been met. Stormwater, because they are greatly reducing the impervious, it's very limited in this. They don't need to provide onsite detention. It's very limited to what they need to do through permitting. In fact, I think they're reducing the asphalt by 8,500 square feet, which is somewhat significant. And as always, I'm available for any questions, or if you'd like me to elaborate on the site plan anymore, I'm happy to.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to question the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move on to the commissioners. Commissioner Clemens, would you go first?
Yes. I do understand about not, about the bank, not even knowing it, because I didn't know it was a bank until I went to drive around for all these places. So I didn't realize it was there. The, a question I have is the parking lot provided 10 feet minimum not met 20 feet encroachment. Can you describe that?
So the parking lot is setback 10 feet. So it is a 20-foot encroachment into that 30-foot required setback. So usually, we want it setback 30 feet. They're at 10, so it's 20 feet that they're asking to be in that setback.
Okay.
I apologize if I wrote that in a way that was hard to understand.
I'm one of the newer commissioners, so I think verbiage gets me sometimes. So.
And it's further complicated when the real setback for a B2 district, or, yes, no, C1 district, I'm sorry, is 10 feet. So basically, the 30-foot setback overrides the original 10-foot. So it gets, it gets complicated in trying to understand the layers.
Okay. There was the only question I had on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
Hi. Thanks for coming in. I, similar to what Joe has said, I didn't realize there was a bank there until I looked closer. So I agree about the lot width and the obstruction from the neighboring buildings. But you, you do now own both of these lots, right?
Correct.
And it looks on the site plan that the back of the lot is not used at all for anything. So my question is, why do we not, why can you not retain the 30-foot impervious setback and put the parking behind the building, which would actually increase visibility more? Because now you don't have cars blocking the front door.
It's, it has something to do with access to the front door. So we want the parking to be within a certain, a certain distance from that door if we go, go to the back. It's just they have to walk further. We don't have very many parking spots on this site. It's 20, I believe. So you're not, you're not going to have a ton of parking, but it's really just that distance from car door to front door.
Okay. Yeah, I do believe that you could just orient the entry to the north and still have the parking in the back would be a more elegant solution, I think. And you still have a front face to the building from Cass. So it almost looks like it was just kind of like it looked over, like we didn't realize that there was a 30-foot, is the way I look at the plan, the site plan, the way it was laid out. So that's just something, I guess, for the other commissioners to think about. I agree with what Joe has said about the context, but it is a brand-new development. So it's an opportunity to get the 30-foot setback that we would ideally want.
We were just, just so you know, we were aware of the setback.
Okay.
We've actually discussed with Joe, when Delaney was here, we were working with her on it.
I only made that comment because there's been, there's been several projects that were unaware of it, because it's kind of like a little footnote in the.
No, no, understood.
And I just want to, I believe one of your first designs did have the building pushed all the way back, but you were still trying to preserve the parking in the front.
Correct.
Which ended up with the building in the back corner. And I wasn't here for those early discussions, but at some point, it was decided that this was a more preferred design.
Okay. The other thing, this is, this is just for record-keeping, I think the architectural elevations, I believe, are mislabeled in terms of their, their compass orientation. I think that the, the actual north elevation is listed as west elevation. So I just want to make note of that. And then, the other three, obviously. But, and then the other, the final thing was on your plat of subdivision, there's a 40-foot building setback line shown. I think that's supposed to be this 30 feet, correct, Joe? The front building setback? It's not 30 plus 10, it's just 30?
Correct. Are you, are you looking at the actual plat of preliminary plan?
Says final plats of consolidation.
Okay. That, that can be corrected. And in particular, we, engineering requests the, on the preliminary plan, setbacks be listed. However, then by final plat, they request that they be pulled off, and that's, that's a very easy fix, just to.
Okay. All right. That was it. I think I would have wanted to see the 30 feet, but I am really appreciative of this new building that's going to greatly increase and add value to the neighborhood, and so I'm a fan of it. I'm, I'm supportive.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Well, I've taken a look at the, the site, and I think it's more important to be consistent with the context than it is to, to be consistent with the, with the code on this one. As far as you're concerned, I don't think it'd probably even cost less if you went by our code strictly. But then you wouldn't, you would stick out. I mean, you, you wouldn't be in, in the context with your, both the Papa Paceros and the parking lot immediately to the south of you. So I, I'm all for it as you, as it was presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes, I, I think that it's a really nice job, really nice project. The building is very attractive. I like it very much. Something, just because of my background, something does stick out at me that might be a benefit, and that is, when you look at the trash and you look at maybe police and fire accessing your building and your site in case of emergency, it's kind of a dead end. And they'd have to back, back out onto Cass. And I think that's going to be the case with your trash. They're going to have to back out onto Cass to do that. And the site kind of lends itself to a crossover to 63rd Street, because you're right there, and the asphalt to the next lot is right there. It might benefit you to, to explore that, because then police, fire, and anyone else, if you've got a crossover access agreement, then it might benefit you and benefit the village or any kind of first responders that come to the site, because they will not be able to pull the ladder truck into the site.
Chris, I don't believe there's an exit to 63rd Street from that west parking lot, only to the south.
Yeah, I realize that. But it's so close that there is a, an opportunity, I think, the way it, it sets now. So when you look at, at the way it sits to Cass, Cass Avenue, yeah, the access comes off of Cass, but there's existing drives that go all the way back that, that go out to 63rd Street. So it already exists, and the connection in your driveway is so close to your lot line that it could be a quick way to solve a problem and make it a better project. Not that it has anything to do with your approval. I'm all in favor of the project, but I'm just trying to, to maybe make it better.
No, thank you. Appreciate that. I'll bring it to the design team and see if that's something that we can incorporate.
Yeah, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm in agreement that it's, it would be in the same context, similar to all the neighbors there with that 10-foot setback. I don't have a problem with that. There are two security lights in the middle of the parking lot currently. I assume that they would be going away. What, can you tell us about security lighting and the?
So everything from like.
I can't tell from the plans.
Everything from lighting to utilities, all of that will comply with all your city ordinances.
Well, I'm just wondering what lighting is.
What?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see any of the plans.
My apologies. I, I'd have to get back to you on that question. I just, I am not the designer. I don't have that one right at my fingertips.
All right.
There is a foot candle plan somewhere in this package. I don't know that it showed where the light fixtures were, but there's levels.
I will explain that I obviously walked into these projects after they had been going back and forth for some time. And I would say that it was kind of last minute that we realized, that staff realized that the photometric plan was not meeting our standards. And the applicant very graciously worked very quickly to amend it to meet our standards. And we were not very critical on the locations of the lights, but know that by the time it comes in for permit, that it will meet the requirement.
All right. Thank you. And that's all I have as well. I'm supportive of this. And unless there's more discussion, Chair would entertain a, a motion to approve.
So move Lavoy.
Second Clemens?
Standby. I think we're going to have three separate votes on this. Approve A, a preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate two lots in the C1 Commercial Business District.
Yeah, so move Lavoy.
Second Clemens?
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the item, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And B, zoning, zoning code variance request to allow a parking lot to encroach into the, encroach into the Cass Avenue supplemental setback line. Have a motion?
So move Van Buren.
Second Clemens?
Second Clemens. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. And C, site and landscaping plan approval for a medical clinic in the C1 Commercial Business District.
Motion approved. Clemens?
Second. Sharp?
Motion a seconded. Discussion, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, sir, you have our approval. Staff will contact you when you can appear before the village board. And thank you.
Very well. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Certainly. Takes a lot of paper to move these things forward.
Yeah.
Next item, PZC 0832021, a request from Colostoga Home Builders regarding the property at 547 63rd Street in Willowbrook for the following. A, a map amendment request to rezone from R1 Single Family Detached Residence District to R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. And B, preliminary plat of subdivision to establish three buildable residential And B, preliminary plat of subdivision to establish three buildable residential lots in the R3 Single Family Detached Residential District. And who would speak to this issue? Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Jun Guang Lin, I'm, my last name is Lin, L-I-N, I go by last name. I'm with Ridge Line Consultants located at 1661 Oak Cut Row in Montgomery, Illinois. I'm a project surveyor and a project engineer on this project. Today, we're, we're making two requests to make the best and highest use for this property. One is to change the zoning from R1 to R3, and the second request is to subdivide this property into three lots, and we're not asking for the zoning variance or any engineering stormwater variance associated with this project. And let me start it out that the property is located, is a, the property is a 1.05-acre residential property on the southeast corner of Ridge and 63rd Street, and the reason the current zoning of R1 was assigned to the property was because this property was one of the block of properties that was involuntarily annexed into the village from, you know, from being incorporated in 2018, so it was a standard practice for the village to assign the least intense, intensive, intensity zoning category, which is R1. If you're looking at the zoning map, the property was surrounded by R3 zoning on the west, on the south, and also by the Ashford community across 63rd Street to the north. There are two exceptions. One is the road of properties immediately to the east, that's zoned for R1, and the reason of these properties zoned for R1 was the same reason why the subject property was zoned for R1, because they were part of the block of property that was annexed into the village. The other, the second exception to R3, which is majority of the neighboring zoning, was R1A, that's located to the southeast of the subject property, but as stated in the staff report, R1A wouldn't, wouldn't fit for what we were trying to do, because R1A would require a much bigger, much longer front, yeah, setback, that would push the proposed buildings way further back from where we want it to be. So that really leave us, the R3 being the, the most fitting category, zoning category for the property. Now, speaking of the subdivision, yes, we're proposing to subdivide the property into three lots, and the layout of the lots, the proposed lots substantially mirror what has taken place to the develop, existing development across Ridge Road to the west of us. We will have a proposed detention basin that will be located on the north part of the northernmost lot, which also mimic what, what has been done to the development to the west. So, upon this property is subdivided, there are two lots, which is the middle lot and the south lot will be, will have 1,1700 square feet in lot area, and the northernmost lot, which, you know, which would accommodate the proposed detention basin, will be 22,300 square feet, so all these are well over the required lot size under R3, which is 7,800 square feet. Also, as part of the improvements, we're proposing to, we're proposing a new concrete walk that will run along the east parkway of Ridge Road that's fronted by the, by the three new lots. And the project has really gone pretty far from a technical review standpoint. We have received the approval from Mr. James Patterson of EZA Engineering with one exception, and that is to add a language on the final plat that states that all lot owners will bear the responsibility of maintaining the stormwater detention basin, which we are not opposed to at all. Also, from the other aspect of the, of the review, that is for the tree survey and preservation plant, this plant was prepared, it was reviewed, and it was revised to address Village Forester John Eager's review until, until, before code enforcement issue came up, and this code enforcement issue was, was initiated by the property neighbors due to the nuisance and the public safety issues associated with the wild animals that recite, that recite or hang out within the subject property, which is full of heavy vegetations and obsolete existing building and garage, which is inhabitable, uninhabitable. So, as demanded by the village, the builder started clearing the trees on the property, also in the process of family, demolishing the existing building and the garage. However, however, as stated in the staff report, we, we're confident that the required tree place, replacement, any heritage tree protection or removals will be done in accordance with the code requirements in place. So that's, that concludes what the technical part of my presentation. I think I'd like to give the floors to, to the owner, my client, the builder, to talk about his professional background and what his vision to this property.
All right. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Kazee Hassan, and good evening, everybody, and Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we've been doing building business about over 20 years around Hindsdale, West Downers Grove, all these areas, and we purchased this property to improve that area, to build the three beautiful custom homes in that area, but that's what we are proposing right now.
So that concludes our presentation, we're here for questions.
Gentlemen, thank you. Staff? Well, first off, thank you, Lin, you, you covered most of the topics that I needed to. So, obviously, this, this property is somewhat blighted, and had been blighted for quite some time. It was in a row of properties along 63rd Avenue that were never in the village, so in 2018, the, the village started initiating involuntary annexations, which basically means that if we encompass the properties and they're of a certain size, we can forcibly bring them into the village, and the village did that in 2018. Now, the village did not initiate a zoning, so what happens whenever any property annexes into the village, it defaults to the lowest intensity zoning, which is R1. So that's why you have this block of R1 homes that are all together, it's because they were all forcibly annexed together. It wasn't that the, the village analyzed that R1 was appropriate for this area, or that they wanted R1 for this area. So the request to rezone, which is the first request, is appropriate, and the, the way that staff deems is it appropriate is we look at two things. We look, number one, at the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan just designates this as single-family area. So this is a single-family development, so it meets that requirement. If anyone remembers, it was probably a year or two ago that, I think, 47-unit apartments were proposed on this property. I know when I was here many years ago, there were proposals for offices on this property as well, so it's always been a property that no one really knew how, how best to develop it. So, the second requirement that we look at is we wanna make sure that we're not doing spot zoning, or basically creating an island of a zoning that's all by itself, and that's why we look at the adjacent zonings and say, is it appropriate? And there are adjacent zonings that are very similar, and I'll give you an example, the house exactly, directly to the south of this is zoned R3, which means it has about a 35-foot setback, it's about a lot size of between 8,000 and probably 10,000 square feet, so it's very similar. So the homes that get built on these will, will somewhat be matching, at least in bulk, to the home that's immediately to the south, and I think it's just easiest for visual, if you, if you look what's on the other side of Ridge Road, on the west side of Ridge Road, the first house has a small detention pond on their property, and then there's two more houses. This is somewhat a mirror of that. Now, as to the code enforcement issues, so code enforcement did intervene because they run on a different time schedule than, than planning and zoning. They're looking for life safety, they're looking for making sure that it is a safe environment. So although we did start the process, we required a tree survey, we were analyzing the trees that we were there, and actually, we have all the documented trees that were there. Whereas, we would typically like to bring these cases before you, once we've figured all that out, and what I mean by figured all that out is, is there a tree that has to come down that's in the detention pond area? Is there a tree that has to come down that's in the buildable area for a new house? Because those are typically the trees that can't be saved, or in those cases where a variance might be requested because a house needs to shift or move. In this case, we are confident that we can work through those, those items. It was more important that code enforcement got the, the site safe and cleared. I wanna say it was a, a den of either foxes or coyotes or something that was living there, that they felt really important that the, the sites start getting cleared. There are no variances requested, so basically, all they're doing is they're creating three lots that meet the minimum lot standards for the, the R3 district, and there are no variances requested for the future homes. And obviously, we're not discussing what those homes look like, but they have provided us with the general site plan of what they think would be there. They have, at my request, made sure that they don't, that the buildings right now are under the 35% lot coverage maximum, and that there is area for a patio or a deck or expansion once a homeowner moves in. We see lots of builders that build as big of a house as you can build, and then the first thing that happens is the new homeowners come in and say, I'd like to add a patio, and we say, so sorry, but your house fits the 35% already. In this case, they're accommodating for that. They're accommodating all the required stormwater improvements, including the pond. We did ask for that note that be added to the plat, which it sounds like the, the applicant is amenable to, and that is really based on the fact that we have some older subdivisions, and the maintenance on those ponds is very lacking, and we feel it's important that because the pond is serving all three of these properties, that if and when the village ever had to intervene, we're, we're intervening and, and holding all property owners partly responsible, not just one homeowner that ends up having the pond on their property. As always, I'm available for any questions. I did forget one thing, that, he is correct, that there will be a new sidewalk that goes along Ridge Road, so it'll finally finish that sidewalk. Basically, and topography, if you've been out there, you know, the sidewalk of the property to the south is very low, basically, that it will come back up. We're not modifying that property or that sidewalk to the south, it's basically, it needs to slope back up, so by the time it gets to 63rd, it is at level with the street. So that's a noted improvement in that area as well. If you have any questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
I have one preliminary question.
Certainly.
I was gonna ask about the lot coverage and the ability to expand for patios or decks, but it sounds like that's been taken into account, so that's good, and the detention is all on Lot 1, and Joe, it sounds like you brought up with the applicant the concern that all homeowners should share in the maintenance. I'm, I'm not sure what language you're proposing for the final plat, and, and this is just preliminary plat approval at this time, so they'll have to come back, but the way it's typically best handled is through the creation of a homeowners association with a document that's recorded against title in addition to the plat, because the plat, homeowners that buy property won't read the fine print on the plat and won't see that they are jointly and severally responsible for maintaining that detention area. But if you create a homeowners association and transfer ownership to the association once the lots are sold, that document is recorded, and they're going to typically read it and realize they're responsible for that maintenance. And to, Mr. Henner Fine's point, we have had problems with detention areas that homeowners simply choose not to maintain, and if there's an association then, and some mechanism for levying assessments for this, there's a greater chance that it will, in fact, be maintained. So maybe between now and final plat approval, we can work on how best to handle that.
Thank you. And John, we haven't proposed any language at this point. This came up very late in the game, and we, we basically said, you know, since we have one of these projects in front of us, we should start instituting some sort of standard language, and we haven't quite figured out the best way to do that. I know that you mentioned an HOA, and this is not an outlot where you would typically transfer ownership of the pond, so I, I can't say what we think is the best way yet. Is it a standard note, is it an HOA? I know that they're amenable to whatever we feel is best, and I'm sure that we will involve you in that process as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, is there anyone from the public who would speak to this? Yes, sir.
Joe Steger, I have the lot that's right, right next to on the east of him.
You say, your lot is just to the east of, you're, you're on 63rd Street?
Yeah, I live actually at 126 Willmet, but my brothers live right there right now. My first question is, when they annexed us, I mean, for West one, that'd probably be better off as commercial, I know it's not gonna be, but, but if, when they're putting the houses up there, they had removed all the trees and stuff? There used to be several trees and stuff that divided my yard from the neighbors? If they're gonna put something, their fence or trees or something divided, because I still have the acre, I don't really want people playing in my yard or whatever.
Can you, gentlemen, answer, respond to that question?
Yes, we will put a fence around the whole property. We'll do, put the fence all around, we'll do that.
Okay. And, sir, did you have any other questions? Or comments?
It won't ever go commercial, it's just, he's, just, you're, as he's doing this, that's all that's being discussed.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go to the commissioners, and let's start with Commissioner Van Buren.
Yeah, if you recall, this property was part of a larger piece of property last year where petitioner came in and wanted to build a high-density apartment, rental apartment building, and at that time, we felt that that would not be appropriate for this area, considering the neighbors immediately to the, across Ridge Road from where this particular item is. I am, I'm all for this, this petition, and I think it's a good idea. My concern has been discussed here tonight, and that was that while all three properties will benefit from the retention on the corner, it's very difficult to enforce unless it's some mechanism is, and I had suggested homeowners association too, that gets to be a little bit heavy. I don't know if there's another way that that could be done where it isn't quite, quite so legal, and I don't, again, that could be, that'll be discussed down the road. But I'm all for the project, and I'm, I'm sure it'll be a real asset to the neighbors as well as to the village.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoie?
Yes, I, I agree with Commissioner Van Buren that the last petitioner on this property got it misfired, got it wrong, there was a lot of opposition, we didn't think it was right, and I think we all agreed that it just wasn't the right fit, but, but I think that this is the right fit. And my really only question, you really haven't asked for any variations, just the subdivision and what we have in front of us, so my only question is really for Joe, and how does, it's consistent with the comp plan, but how does this, if this is approved, how does this impact those, those other lots between this property and the PUD property going further to the east? We have several other lots there that are not part of this applicant's, you know, presentation or proposal, but what happens to those lots, and would that, you know, building a single-family lot that has to face 63rd Street, you know, is that something that is of concern to staff?
That's not an easy question to answer, so, in some of the previous proposals, and we've had lots of proposals on these properties over time, you know, some of those proposals, not just combine this lot with the one right next to it, but they, they looked at all the lots... all the way up to that multifamily housing that you're saying is the PUD property.
Right.
And I want to say that the comp plan, as it gets closer to that PUD property, is multifamily versus single-family.
Uh-huh.
So it's not changing anything for those properties, but it is kind of closing the door to what I would say, any development that wanted to use
All of it.
All of it, and Ridge Road as access. And that was one of the always, that was always one of the difficulties we had, and for example, so an office had proposed something to us, and it never came before this committee, but basically, where we, the sticking point was, we didn't want all the traffic from the parking lots to come out on the Ridge Road, because that's where you want to exit, because that's where the traffic light is.
Right.
So basically, it means that any development of those inner lots would always need access off 63rd. And ideally, we want as few access points for those homes as possible. It means that right now, they probably only develop as single-family.
Right.
And if someone tried to subdivide one of those, like they are like this, this group would probably be much more critical, because they would have to access onto 63rd.
Yes.
So I wouldn't say that it's limiting, but it's also not prohibiting what they can already do on their lots.
Well, I think, in my opinion, that this applicant's got it right. And we got it wrong last time, but I think this fits well here, and we don't have the opposition, and I'm supportive, and have no further questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes, yeah, I was really surprised at the condition of the property when I saw it, and I think this is a good use for it, especially since they have taken consideration, extra space, like the deck, et cetera. The, also, you know, similar homes to the south, and then also that there is no minimum, the lots meet the minimum requirements needed, and also no variances needed. So I'm in support of it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
I have no questions. I am supportive.
I guess I, I just wondered if there was a specific, if the developer, if you have a specific tree plan already, or if that's in the future. But clearing everything out, I certainly agree with the neighbor that you need a buffer there on the east side, and you're saying a fence, I don't know if you have plans for, excuse me, for trees along that east side of these three lots?
Yes, we will put, we will do all the landscaping and everything, whatever you need to be done accordingly, the trees, and also fence and everything, yes.
And can you explain how, because that neighbor to the south, that parking lot along Ridge Road drops down to a low spot, at a point, and stops, how you're going to connect? Are you going to connect on one long slant down to meet those two, or are you going to?
Yeah, no.
How are you going to handle that?
That wasn't easy. When we designed it, we do plan on, I think we were, if I recall right, yeah, I was the engineer, but we did propose to remove maybe five to 10 feet of the existing concrete walk, and because of the grading issue, and then we, we do propose this walk connect, you know, the new walk connecting to where the existing walk is. But we still have to abide, yes, there is a slope, but we still have to abide by American Disability Code, which limits the maximum longitudinal slope of the walk.
Have you considered contacting the existing homeowner there and seeing if you could work with them to modify their sidewalk so that it doesn't drop so steeply, and it would make it smoother to tie those two together?
We believe that the reason of that walk, existing walk being that low, has to do with overflow, the detention overflow from the R1A properties. So we thought about that, and we decided to keep that existing grade there, and then connecting to it.
The previous detention on those lots was at the south end, and you're moving that detention to the north end, so.
I'm talking about the existing detention pond to the southeast of the subject property.
Yes, I understand.
I'm sorry, Chair, Mr. Chair, you were saying?
I was just commenting on if, if there's anything we could do to reduce the steepness of that existing sidewalk, and as it moves to the north.
We'll talk to the neighbors and everything, and we'll do that.
And the existing sidewalk that's going along 63rd Street, will that be replaced, or will it just remain?
It will remain.
It'll remain. It'll be on the south side of the detention.
Not touching that.
Okay, well, I think this is a much, much better proposal than the previous apartment building there, and I think that the neighborhood, the neighbors will certainly be much more accepting as well. We thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, any further discussion? Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to approve PCC 127 2021A, special use permit, request to operate, no, a map amendment request to rezone from R1, single-family detached residence district to an R3, single-family detached residence. Mo Van Buren?
Second, Sharp.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Roll call, please. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoie?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Carmichael? And B, preliminary plat of subdivision to establish three buildable residential lots in the R3, single-family detached residence district. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Clemmons?
Motion to approve, Clemmons?
Second, Sharp.
Second, Sharp. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please. Commissioner Lavoie?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, you have our recommendation. We'll go forward to the Village Board, and you'll be notified by the Village Staff when you're scheduled to appear.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and good job. Yes?
Do they send out notice to the neighbors who they have a vote for meeting?
What's that?
Do they send out a notice to the neighbors around the head of the board meeting?
No.
No.
That's just for the public hearing. So you just have to keep an eye on the Village website, and the agenda is always posted there. Or you can always call the Community Development Department, and they can tell you on what date it will proceed.
Okay, but that be a few months, a week?
Yeah, it'll probably be in two weeks to four weeks.
I think we anticipate November 4th.
November, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir. Okay, next item is PCC 127 2021, a request from Dr. Annie Ubatuba, Doctor Veterinary Medicine and BLAH Group LLC regarding property located at 100 South Cass Avenue in Westmont for the following. First, a special use permit request to operate an animal clinic in the B1 Limited Business District. Secondly, a zoning code variance request for an animal clinic to be located within 100 feet of a residence district. Good evening.
I'm Ken Just with RWE Design Build, representing Dr. Annie Ubatuba.
I'm Dr. Annie Ubatuba. I'm veterinarian in the area, and I can do.
I think it's a simple ask. We're asking for a reasonable request for, to operate an animal clinic within B1, and we're also requesting a variance regarding the 100-foot to residential district. I think we're at 65 feet. I think, you know, this property of 100 South Cass has been long neglected. You know, I think it's, I think it would be a good use, and it would improve the community.
Okay. Just a second.
I wanted to, I just wanted to say something regarding the clinic. I think it just says "animal clinic," which I think can be confusing, or sort of misleading, I guess, in our case. I am interested in starting a rehabilitation clinic for animals. This will be a standalone clinic that does not offer general medicine. It only will offer services, including musculoskeletal ultrasound as a diagnostic, gait analysis, stance analysis, hydrotherapy, or underwater treadmill, as people know, manual therapies, including massage, chiropractic, and photobiomodulation, which is laser therapy, also therapeutic exercise, and will include a therapy gym, and therapeutic ultrasound. So this would be an innovative veterinary practice that will not only serve the surrounding community, but also the local veterinarians in the area, as there is not a standalone rehabilitation facility for referral. So I just wanted to clarify that with everyone.
All right, very interesting. Joe? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what you have before you are two requests. The first is the request for a special use. The second is for a variation to distance to residential. So the special use permit, and forgive me if I'm lecturing something that everyone knows here, but basically, in our downtown, in the B1, we historically have taken most service uses and made them into special uses. And that's particularly, not only because we want to do our typical analysis of, does the use fit in the building, but we've always been very critical of the businesses that move into the downtown, particularly because they're not generating tax revenue. So the first is that this is a service use, although the applicant has indicated a significant amount of retail sales that is anticipated out of the business. So for the special use in particular, and so you had noted that it's not really an animal clinic, it's more animal rehabilitation. It's our code that calls it an animal clinic. We basically call it a vet clinic or an animal clinic. And then we have a special designation for animal hospitals, which I think kind of implies a 24-hour component, or a day-end-night component to it. But in this case, the critical issues, as you look at this, typically that arise from this type of use, I think we've already asked the applicant to address, at least in their application, and they can answer the questions to it. What is, first is, obviously, pets will be coming and going from this facility, and there's going to be some client that doesn't clean up after their pet, and how are you going to address that? So they've addressed that they will be looking to clean up outside of the building on a regular basis. There is, what I would state, is a very poor green area on the north side of the building, on Richmond, which is mostly kind of weed bushes and some grass there. The applicant has indicated that initially, they would put a waste station there, and over time, they'd like to re-approach about some exterior improvements, including sprucing up that area. The other is, we want to make sure that there's no overnight kenneling of pets, which they've indicated there is no overnight, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the typical client brings their pet, it's for an hour session. That client needs to find somewhere to spend an hour. We hope it's in our downtown, and then takes the pet back. So there is no overnight facility that's proposed as part of this. And the other is typically noise, is, are the pets going to be generating noise? The building does have windows, but I know you are making improvements, so I think it's a valid question for the applicant. At this point, there's no mitigation that's requested from staff, or being proposed by the applicant. The last piece of this, of that special use, is it says it needs to be 100 feet from residential. And the way we measure that is, we measure it from the building that they're looking at to the closest residential property. And in this case, it's 65 feet. So those are the things that we're looking at. That's the variance they're requesting. We do have one precedent that was set with Urban Veterinary Associates, which is on the north side of the tracks. And I think if you were here when that came through, the same concerns were typically voiced. I cannot account that we've received complaints about something in the sidewalk, or anything like that. And the last piece I kind of want to note is that this building sits fully vacant right now. And if you know this building at all, it's historically had a problem getting tenants, and then it does have this awkward space on the kind of backside that faces Richmond that was always a dentist, I think. And the applicant is, the building itself is 5,000 square feet. The applicant is looking at remodeling, taking 2,800 square feet of it. There will still be two tenant spaces, the south tenant spaces, that will be available for future tenants. They will take the corridor space as well, which I think is actually a visible space. I don't know if you're going to use that to your advantage, but it does have windows, and so you can see what's happening on the inside. And then, I just want to note, particularly for the applicant, that this property is in violation for the condition of the parking lot in the rear. The parking lot in the rear can hold about eight to 10 spaces. I say about, because it's not striped. And I'm saying 10 spaces, because there are 10 little parking blocks, so you know that one time, there were 10 spaces that were there. And whether the current owner, or whether the new owner, it would have to be remedied quickly to appease code enforcement, because right now, it's just deteriorated to a point, it's almost not usable, it's almost gravel. So we, and the code enforcement would be looking to have that remedied quickly. And as always, I'm here for any questions.
I just also want to make a point about the 100-foot setback from a residence district that virtually all properties in the B1 district, but residential property typically to the rear, and it would be almost impossible to find a location in the B1 district for this use while meeting the 100-foot setback requirement.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the applicant?
What?
Thought just maybe. And have you been sworn in?
I have not.
You swear that all your testimony will be the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Be sure and sign it.
My name is Dr. Jessica Torek. I'm a veterinarian at Urban Vet Associates, and I would just like to very happily and hopefully welcome Dr. Ubatuba to our community. As a veterinarian who encountered quite a bit of rebuffing from a competitive practice, I would like to make that not the precedent in our village. I think that Dr. Ubatuba has a wonderful plan for her clinic, and our community desperately needs a rehab veterinarian. I do a fair bit of orthopedic surgery, and I often have to refer my clients as far as the city or home or Glenn, in order to receive appropriate veterinary services and rehabilitation. And as a result, many pets don't receive that care. And so I think it would be a wonderful partnership, and hopefully bring quite a lot of things to our community, to have Dr. Ubatuba as part of it. I also would like to note that we have not had, and actually have quite a good relationship with our neighbors, so we don't have any difficulty with that 100-foot variance that we received Grace for. And so I don't think that should be an issue. I know their West Suburban Veterinary Associates actually has only about a 30-foot departure, I believe, from their property lines between the clinics and the adjacent neighbors, and I don't believe they've had any difficulties either. I know, Commissioner Clemmons, you're our neighbor downtown, and I don't know if you've ever encountered any, you know, animal waste, or loud sounds, or foul smells from our building, and we like to make sure that we mitigate that as much as possible. So I would just like to speak very highly in favor of having Dr. Ubatuba as part of our community.
Thank you very much. That will hold a lot of sway, I think. My first question is, we're going to have a second veterinary clinic?
My first question is, we're going to have a second veterinary clinic in the B1 Business District, but I was unaware that there were rehabilitation businesses, so this is pretty neat. Anyone else from the public? If not, then let's go to the commissioners. And you going to, Joe? Oh, well, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Anything else from staff? Say that again? If there's anything else from staff, please. No, I have nothing to add. I think that Dr. Jess summed up very well. All right. Let's start with Commissioner Sharp.
Hi. I agree, this is a, I didn't really think, I guess, know that such a program existed. It's an exciting niche, it seems, for veterinary medicine. I just have a couple easy questions. What are your proposed hours for this? What kind, this kind of facility, what kind of hours does it hold?
So proposed hours are, it's kind of a work in progress, but typically on Monday through Friday, maybe like eight to five. There will not be after hours. The patients that come for rehabilitation are healthy animals and so it won't, they won't have any overnight or, you know.
No urgent care?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And are you purchasing the building or?
Yes, I am.
And what about the exterior? Is there any work being done on the exterior for immediate term?
Yes, the exterior will be updated to reflect the inside of the building. I know now it looks like it has a lot of potential.
Okay. But there are no plans currently to obscure any of the current glazing or windows on the building, or are there?
To obscure, no.
No.
Okay.
No, because, well, the idea is to have the rehab gym where dogs do therapeutic exercise in the window space, so people when they're sitting at the train can watch their dogs doing underwater treadmill and their exercise.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's an exciting thing to see in a window. I'm in favor and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Van Buren?
Yes, I, too surprised that this was not a full-service veterinary clinic, which apparently we do have enough of those in Westmont.
I will send them all.
Most of the services, most of the services that are performed here would not require a veterinarian, probably would be more of a vet tech, is that right? Or a physical therapist type of thing?
Well, I have taken additional hours of training to expand my knowledge in veterinary medicine and I also sit on the Chicago Veterinary Board and that would, having some of the services done, not under the supervision of a veterinarian, would be practicing veterinary medicine without a license. But a lot of the therapies can be done by a veterinary technician, but I will always need to be there to supervise, make correct diagnoses, and then advanced procedures such as intra-articular injections, musculoskeletal ultrasound, any, you know, chiropractic things would be done by me.
Okay, well, good luck to you and I'm glad you're here.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Lavoy?
I'm just very supportive of the application. I don't really see a problem with it. I know that I have witnessed a lot of opposition to animal clinics or animal, not rehab, but places that they board, in particular the 163rd and Main in Downers Grove, received a lot of opposition because of the noise, but this is not that at all. My question was really answered by the hours of operation. And the only thing is that, to note, is that that particular sidewalk and that intersection is a crosswalk for Holy Trinity, that's the school across the street. So there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there, but that's really not a conflict either. And there's a lot of traffic, sometimes that light gets backed up for the train crossing, but other than that, I really don't see this as being, bringing a lot of traffic to you at that particular rush hour, you know, that it was not going to add to that kind of component. So I really see it as a good fit for building downtown and, you know, we, I look forward to seeing you there. I don't really have any opposition to this request at all.
Excellent. Commissioner Clemmons?
Okay, so when I was reading the zoning analysis, it said underserved profession. I was like, how can it be an underserved profession? Because Dr. Jess was right there. So you did address that and this is a very interesting concept. I was just curious, what size animals will you be having?
Anywhere from cats to a great dane.
Okay. And then also to address the waste. So my business is two doors down from Urban Vet and I've been there one year and honestly there is not, and typically they park right in front of my office window on the side street. And so they all go around the corner, I have not once had waste on the sidewalk. When I was at Eight and a Half North Cass, people walking their dogs, it was constant. But that's people from the neighborhood. So I don't foresee a problem with that at all either. So I look forward to it, I think this is a great addition to the community, I didn't even know there was such a thing.
Thank you, and I'm in agreement as well. I have to say that my uncle was a large animal veterinarian, cattle, hogs, one of the early pioneers of in vitro fertilization and embryo transplant, which has nothing to do with this discussion, of course. Can you give me a simple, in layman's terms, what is laser therapy?
So laser therapy is these class four lasers typically. And what they do is they help improve circulation, reduce pain, and help surgical sites, wound healing, so kind of helps speed up healing of certain conditions and also can help with arthritis and joint inflammation. So they're used very frequently in animals, not as much in people yet, but I think that the research is going that way and will soon be more of an available option for post-op pain reduction in human medicine as well.
That's interesting.
Ask a question?
Certainly.
I may have a dog who's in need of rehab services soon, do you know when you're going to open?
We have to talk to Ken about that because we're working out those.
We still have to design, permit, build, so.
Hopefully next year.
Next year, 2022.
I also have a nine-year-old shepherd and you know what their problems are, hip dysplasia.
Okay. I think we're ready to vote here. Do I have a motion to approve A, a special use permit to operate an animal clinic in the B1 Limited Business District?
Motion to approve, Clemmons?
A motion?
Second, Sharp.
Second, Sharp. Discussion, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes?
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes, and second, a zoning code variance request for an animal clinic to be located within 100 feet of a residence district.
Sommo, Van Buren?
I'll second.
Lavoy? Second, Lavoy. Questions, discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
Well, there you have it. Welcome to the community and we're very excited about this and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Joe will let you know when you're scheduled to go before the Village Board.
I will follow up with you to the date and we anticipate November 4th, but if that doesn't work, we can always work with you, so.
Thank you for coming, Dr. Miscellaneous, before we adjourn, does anyone have any announcement? Joe, you look like you.
Did you want me to announce the cancellation and rescheduling or did you?
I was going to do that, but go ahead.
Okay, so we typically would have our November meeting on November 10th. That conflicts with the 100-year anniversary, which will be occurring, and so staff felt it was best if we rescheduled that. So we polled all the commissioners and a week later, on Wednesday, December 17th, is where we're planning on rescheduling that. So you will see a cancellation come out and a rescheduling. And that's all staff has for it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
I just wanted to publicly welcome Joe back. You were an asset before, you're an asset now, and it's just really comforting to know that you're there, really clear explanations, always has been, and I just really appreciate what you do.
Thank you. It's been a real test to jump in when I wasn't on these projects from start to finish. I was thinking I might get questions I couldn't answer tonight, so thanks for going easy on me.
Wally, did you have something you were going to add?
No.
I thought I saw your hand up, so.
No, no. I just was saying, I second that with Joe.
Of course, yeah. Welcome back. Well, I would.
I have a question. Is that Burlington Development still moving forward? The one that's Burlington and Cass Avenue?
I can't hear you.
Burlington and Cass Avenue, the apartment.
Yeah, there was some delay getting the various agreements fine-tuned and signed off on and exhibits attached, that has occurred.
Oh, yeah.
The one-year clock is ticking for them to come in and get their final plat approval, which will have to be done by end of April of 2022. And then, once they get their final plat approval, there's a deadline for them to close on the properties and then they can start construction. So still a ways off before you'll see anything happen on that property, but as of now, all things are a go. I know they're still working, you know, with financing issues, et cetera, so unless material costs continue to rise absurdly or financing becomes an issue, this project will move forward.
All right, thank you for the update.
Could you discuss the new construction down at the South Fire Station?
What is it?
It's going to be, at the back of the property is going to be the new fueling station. What's out front closer to Cass Avenue, does anybody?
I thought that was the fueling.
Bruce knows.
Bruce?
So the entire construction site that you're seeing is for that fueling area. There's a pretty big driveway so that, you know, if there's two or three buses or cop cars or public works vehicles that need fueling, they're not.
Well, it'll be both police and fire, huh?
Yes, and public works.
Yeah, and public works.
Charging stations too?
I'm sorry?
Are they going to be putting charging stations in there too?
You know, I have not heard that. I don't think at the moment that's in the plan, but who knows what's going to happen in the future. But currently, all of the village's fleet vehicles are purely gas.
Okay. Because next door to Sanitary District, we've got Downers Grove and we all fuel there. And they have compressed gas in addition to, but.
I think you sent me a link about that. Don't they create compressed gas from the Sanitary District?
No, no, we do that, we do, we run our, we run all of our electric off of it.
That's it.
But we don't, we don't compress gas.
Okay, thank you, good discussion. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Clemmons, I know my name.
Secondly, adjourned.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.